What was that?
Probably my bones. Are you making phone calls?
Monday, July 8th. Commissioner meeting, do we start with the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Morning, your people.
Unless somebody put a snapper on my shirt.
Approve of that. Okay, first thing, roll call. All commissioners present, Michelle Morris. Josh Nye is not in attendance. Additions or deletions to the agenda? I have a bill, Western Consultants. We'll put that under approval of minutes bills. Was there anything?
Personnel change form.
Personnel change form for clerk. We'll just add that into your clerk, Michelle Morris. Pause it, put it in that same line. We'll put, and personnel.
Where are we adding the bill at?
Down there.
Oh, can I say that?
Anybody have anything else? One once, one twice. Need a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. You're good. You are okay. Public comment, gentlemen, anything? Nothing? Public comment?
No.
No? Okay, we'll move past that. For response commission inspection report. What's this all about?
There's some things there, so I just wanted to clarify. Are they issued for this? Do you have their inspection?
Is this just for their equipment?
It looks like they were working at the generator.
Yeah. Okay, so this is just for information?
Yeah.
There is no action necessarily?
So you guys are aware?
Okay.
Oh, this is what they send them, isn't it?
Yeah. Imagine that. Your inspection, I assume it's even more.
Uh, yes.
Did they give this? So the road and bridge has this already?
Huh?
What was the other thing?
Road and bridge, they have this? This report?
And the sheriff.
Yeah.
For their, okay.
What is it?
It's a.
Their, where they come down and do their stuff.
Is it newer?
Yeah.
Well, and there's reports in there for the generators and.
You have some big shares.
This was put in a couple of years. This is the one that was put in a couple of years, well, last year, wasn't it? The one behind you.
We have one back here, the sheriff has one. But that's what those are.
Does this also include the health department one?
I don't think there's a.
Yeah, there's a different. Which as far as I know, we've got that taken care of.
I think so, nobody said.
Did it, did anything come back as issues?
No. Matter of fact, checked out.
Are they doing any of that?
Okay, Kansas water pollution control permit.
Yeah, we'll get these over here.
Yeah.
Just tell us who's on the permits.
And it'll show a bunch of other counties, too. Yeah. And there's no action needed on this?
No.
This is just informational?
That is correct.
Is it Quinamo?
I think we only got one in here, but I don't remember.
Is it in the city of Quinamo? On the front, it says city.
Right there, yeah.
So.
It should be a field.
Why do we get the one from the city?
It's probably in County. It's probably outside of the city limit. And I think. There's none of them all of them. But I'm surprised Bernie gave this to me.
Are you within the city limits?
No.
Maybe I filed for your permit. This is the surface water one that Quinamo has.
I said, I don't see it. What pages are they?
Quinamo?
Yeah.
It's on page five. First one, under public notice. Just saying where they're putting their water. All it says is basically information.
If you want this one back, I assume this is your original.
They send that every year and it's always the same one on it?
This is your original. Okay, petition.
Michelle, why would we be getting this? Why would we be getting this? This is a court case.
I ordered it, it's a walk-in. I thought I'd be, you guys are worried.
I think it probably goes there. I don't think it has anything to do with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want you to be aware of this.
Okay. We don't have any action.
Yeah, I don't even know what the petition is actually for, Miss Kline.
Yeah, they're trying to protect the person who has, if I remember looking at that over. Email. We'll just put that there for now. Interest rate memo.
What's the effect? Oh, this will go into effect in January?
Yeah.
I think we just talked about this a little bit last year, didn't we? On what the interest rate is that when you don't give, issue their refunds, so.
Yeah.
And tells them right there clearly what the percentage is, their interest rate is.
Right.
And what they pay if they're doing wrong taxes. Did you notice that real property and personal property are two different interest rates?
There's one specifically.
Yeah. Yeah, it says right on there.
Yeah.
Under each one of the deals, because there's one under.
Yeah.
The protests, there's one under both, and there's one under refunds by contractors. Did we send this up to the treasurer? Treasurer got a copy of this? We need to make sure they get a copy, yes.
Make sure she's got it. And then Valley Grove Cemetery update. And did Scott confer at the meeting today?
Yeah, I think he's coming at nine thirty, I see.
So. Dean Sebel, I'm going to the treasurer and they are throwing it in Jason's side.
So. Just so we're clear. When people sit down, is it just the townships that we have to approve the nominations? It's not all the taxing entities, correct?
To my opinion, it's just the townships and our, which is first.
So I've never seen a report come back from one of the cemetery boards, this is the first time?
Those aren't really about.
Well, because this isn't a linked body, so they go ahead and.
Right. Let's, I'm just making sure that.
Speaking of Dapper Dan, look who shows up.
I know, there's big questions all throughout the county on how different entities and, you know, get their, their people, so.
Within, working with them and stuff in terms of, you know, you can dictate that stuff back there and having this, who knows what, who needs to receive what, contact information and.
Good, very good.
They've got a lot there about. Go ahead and say all those changes.
We have fifteen minutes, I think. Do you have sheriffs? Wells, Tom?
Thank you, gentlemen.
I think we could probably jump that and get to your stuff. Is fifteen minutes enough time?
Do you have to tell them to show up?
No, because we're up against Scott's time at nine thirty. I just figured we could probably handle your stuff and even the Western Consultants bill.
Uh, yeah.
If there's time.
Go ahead and do the Western Consultants.
Okay.
Oh, this is from the CDBD.
Yeah.
This is order of the.
I think it's as performed.
That's what it takes, it says five.
Yeah, because we have the same one for a little while.
Right. Pretty sure they don't, they only bill when they have payouts and work that they have to do. So I will need a motion to approve paying Western Consultants for Osage County Sailaway CDBG sewer improvements in the amount of $2,008.
So moved.
Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. You want to visit your boater stuff towards the end of the meeting? If there's, you've got plenty of time or?
Where would you?
Have you want to answer? I don't want to put you up against. The clock. Yes. There's one call response. Okay, so this one is from Kay Camp. Received June eighteen, twenty twenty-four. Excuse me. Budgeting for twenty twenty-five property liability coverage for risk management services. Um, this letter. It talks about their rates, with fund our pool, risk sharing, where losses are up just over six percent. Inflation costs are moderating, property values up approximately five percent. Still high but lower than the years of dealing following COVID pandemic. Members who recently received property appraisal, we see their property valuations increased by more than five percent. Reinsurance pricing was moderated with our property reinsurance rate slightly lower than last year, but liability reinsurance costs expected to increase. We continue to keep the total inventory of costs expected to increase only by four percent. So this letter is just giving us a heads up. Says all of these changes should result in an average eight to twelve percent increase in your twenty twenty-five member contribution.
Does it say how much ours is?
Eight to twelve.
It doesn't say what ours is, it just has the rate increase.
When do we learn how much that is?
Just need to request that information, Michelle.
What's that?
Kay Camp, if you can get our premium rate.
Is this just for liability or is this, oh, it's its property, so?
That's just property, that's.
Well, it's property and liability, so it's all in our, basically. Right? And our buildings as liability?
We should probably take a hard look at that, of course, just.
Are there other carriers? Are there other carriers?
That one's sensitive, though, because some of your cities have Kay Camp and they can only have it at town events. So if we are looking into different.
I don't think there's anything that competes with Kay Camp at all, not even.
Yeah, price-wise, I really don't.
It just wants to know, we do, they'll send us what our actual rating is.
Good. And then this one's the Northeast Kansas Library System. I apologize, I dropped the ball. Did you guys have anybody that wanted to be a part of it? Did you ever get any, we talked about it and I know we were gonna.
Did you, I don't know that I.
This is for us to appoint a representative to the Northeast Kansas Library Association or system. And I just, I dropped the ball. Forgot all about it, Michelle brought it back to my attention.
I don't. I don't remember this. So we need.
It was quite a long. Okay.
Are you out of shape?
I am, I'm scared.
That's only like, probably twenty feet up.
Did we put anything out or something?
If you want, go ahead and.
They have an elevator. We have an elevator. We have an elevator.
Right. Okay, since you're here. Read it. This is the last one from here. Oh, not the vehicle one.
This is the last vehicle we sent.
Well, there's the jail one that we should, it's where they never, they just wait for it to get there, so.
This Explorer Expedition, one of the Explorers.
Oops, sorry, that's turning into its background. Pretty ready to rock. Okay. I will need a motion to approve paying the purchase order number three nine six three to Superior Emergency Response Vehicles for a twenty twenty-four Ford Interceptor utility white upped in it. Do, uh, this isn't pickup, right? It's the.
Explorer.
Explorer. The Explorer. In the amount of fifty-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars and forty cents to be paid from the vehicle funding.
That's been about the same price of all of them, hasn't it?
I forget.
So moved.
Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
That's replacing one?
Yes, it is replacing.
And I know I ask this every time you guys work on it, but have we sold any recently or do we have some?
Uh, we sold three a while back. I got one ready to go right now, I just need to get it up the option. And then we'll, this one will just, the one replacing it will be moved to the jail, we'll just strip that one.
When you're ready, we'll get them up there.
There's no change, I think it's just the hours.
Oh, is this the one that moved, uh, SRO to the road?
It's basically. Sorry, the eight hour rotation and twelve hour. Okay, I'll just need a motion to approve these stats payroll change brought forth by Sheriff Wells for an hourly change, hours change. Hours change.
So moved.
Motion's been made?
How does it?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I don't actually want those because they are getting home six hours more of them.
Well, I knew you had this, this one you talked about a while back, that you were switching him over, that he wanted to go on the road. We're gonna miss him at our school, but. Wait, he was our SRO in Osage City.
Was, you expect to do that?
The first of. July, July. Yeah. We have to change your dates on here. There's June one. I was rushing, didn't it, no question.
It was all that running up and down the steps.
Is that separate from action?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The motion's been made, seconded.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
What's the contract?
What is this?
What's the contract on?
It was the one we discussed two weeks ago. Internet?
Internet stuff.
We got bids for different, different bids for different internet, so we can't let them know.
This time.
Are all the bids in? So it doesn't matter, then, they can be talked about openly, then, if they're, all the bids are in?
As long as you want to finalize, but not go back and negotiate.
I'm with you.
So. Just want them to know which ones you're negotiating.
Exactly.
If it's a deal, we're good to go, then it doesn't matter. Or what you want to talk about before we say, which one are. Know the, well, for contracts, just because it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, we absolutely can take a break and go back to the session for contract information bid process. So what do you, you need five minutes or ten minutes or?
Yeah, five minutes, really, it's just more of sharing information that we have found so far.
I'm moving the interto executive session for contract information and bid secrets for five minutes. So we would set to return at nine thirty-one with Sheriff Wells, all three commissioners and.
Second.
Sunny and Brett.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
That's Fred.
Okay.
You sure?
Well, no.
Absolutely, definitely, I appreciate it.
No action taken in the executive session. I just told him the gift contract and this whole thing, you guys and Josh, for reviewers and old man of last week, sounds good?
Yes, which reminds me, I have already designated. And, oh, he just left. He printed out, oh, shawty, he printed out the instructions. And so when you set up a zoom, there's actually a county ID number issue, but that one instead of letting it generate generically. Then we have to make the need for the task. So we tested it a few weeks ago on Mike, we're at it all. So the instructions are in there, but. I'm gonna use it next week and then I'll have to, whatever stuff, I'm gonna have to have stuff emailed to me, whatever I need.
Mr. Lloyd, I tried to get you before you sat down.
Oh.
And it's nine thirty, we're actually three minutes late.
Hey, no problem.
Fred, this is the guy I wanna talk to.
Oh, yes. After you fix the hole in the bridge, you know, it's.
Actually got rocking on that.
Let it hold down pretty big, or did I?
I did.
I sent you electronic everything, but marked up, but. You sure? Okay, um. So I think all the, the extra worksheets, and I'll get to them second, are done except for the one by Axton County. I've sorta get that one finalized, which is comparison of twenty four to twenty five's proposals. But really on that worksheet, my staff called it Heather's worksheet, but it's, it's actually that worksheet has literally all of those numbers on it, it just doesn't have the percentage. So a couple things, since I've seen you last time, I've had, I've had interesting things happen, I just gotta mention, it really didn't affect you, but it really got my attention. So, you know, in today's world, it's hard to understand how international could affect a local government in Kansas. The other day I got the value for Pratt County, and their value's about two hundred million, but it dropped fourteen million. So they started off in the whole nine hundred thousand because their assessed value dropped. And it was all because, this is really fascinating, actually, it's when the Ukrainian war built up, you know, they were gonna cut off the gas from Russia. So they, US bulked up the storage and the price went up, and so the price was at seven eighty two, uh, a unit. Uh, just this year, the state assessed it at two thirty nine. And Pratt has all this underground storage out there, and that's how they, part of their assessed value. So that assessed value went down fourteen million just on the gas storage.
So the good news is we have none of that in Osage County.
No, but.
So the variables that are in there, like.
The scary thing about today, and it's kinda like the eighties, I mean, I just kinda lived it as a college student and that, but the bubble. You know, the bubbles we have on this assessed value right now is housing, uh, property, farmland flattened out this year for, for counties. But that, that was one thing that really, uh, got my attention. I'm still trying to find the article, because we've talked about this quite a bit, uh, and these are just general comments, but I'm still trying to find the article, uh, from Utah on revenue neutral rate. And how in eight to nine years, the, the local governments there were potentially close to bankruptcy. And here's why, I hadn't really thought about this too much, but my mayor friend, it's McPherson Mayor, he's eighty two, and he was an insurance guy, Farmers' Line, Deputy Vice President. But he's done a lot of studying on this whole thing, and I'm not saying anything, but I think I figured out how to address revenue neutral and make sure we're okay. So, uh, there's a new article, and I just, I've read part of it, and I haven't sent it to you yet, it's, it's, uh, from Government Finance Officers of America, it's, uh, Should We Rethink Reserves? And it talks about how the model today, uh, is not just, uh, you, you were just talking about the insurance. So, uh, it's not just, uh, cash, but cash is pretty important because you can't go borrow, but it's insurance, cyber, you know, security, all these different things. And how do you package those so that you make sure you protect, uh, your county? And so something I hadn't really thought about, uh, until, uh, I was thinking through this whole revenue neutral rate, I can't find the article from Utah. But, you know, I told you this, when you, when you lock the dollars and inflation goes like this, which that's kind of the mode we're in, then the mill levy goes like this. But we have to have other revenue sources, which we've been working on, uh, on different, you know, your county and other counties. Uh, interest income, like for example, the assessed value increase just on years, uh, is about three hundred and twenty nine thousand that you're not taking, you know, advantage of. So there's, there's, there's three hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars.
Well, when you say we're not taking advantage of it, it's, we're choosing not to increase the taxes on the people. It's not that we're not taking advantage, it's that we're, we are doing the exact thing, we're not taking advantage of it, because that's what it is, is we're taking advantage of taxpayers every time we have a tax increase. And we look back through the history of Osage County, it was abused horribly, and that's why we're in the boat we are today, is that's why it's time that we had, somebody has to step up and say enough's enough. And if we need to be the example, then we can be that. But I have no problem with if the county ever needs money, that we say, hey, we need to increase taxes, because R and R does nothing but makes you have a hearing that says you will disclose that you're raising taxes. That's all the R and R is. If anybody reads any more than that into it, that you're giving money up or anything else, that's bull crap, because the bottom line is, you're having a hearing to say that I am going to raise your taxes, which is why I have to have this hearing. I'm not saying whether you need it or not, that's, the point is, if you need the money, I have no problem saying we need to have the hearing because we need more money. But the part where people say that it's being a crutch, that's saying that you're giving up money, that's not true, because what it is, is we're collecting the same tax dollars, we all know how that works. We do, but if you want, if you need more money, because there are entities that need more money, and I get that, because gravel grows up, everything else goes up. And if you have to have that, that's why you have the hearing, just says, hey, we need more money to, to function in this capacity.
No, I totally agree, and then you said, I think the people in Topeka are not understanding what revenue neutral can do to the government, if the people there don't understand what revenue neutral does.
Correct.
And here's what happens, when it locks, and you don't have any other resources to take care of that inflation, unencumbered cash disappears. And that was the question you asked me is to.
I ask you that every year, correct.
And that's what we did with that one worksheet, like with raises and all that, to see what impact that would have on unencumbered cash. And that's what's happening in some of the governments, they don't have other resources to be able to, to take care of that. And like Pratt County, that first year, they had, this is, this is the mentality it used to be, okay? Can you keep the mill levy the same, okay? That's what it used to be, okay, can you keep the mill levy the same? Really not worrying about assessed value, okay, but can you keep the mill levy the same? And what would happen is, and that's what happened at Pratt when I took over, is, yeah, they kept the mill at the same, but their unencumbered cash went in the hole. They had no, they had no other, they get, they get, um, one point five million from windmills. They were one of the first ones to get in on the deal before it, it actually adds to the tax rule, they actually get a, in lieu of tax at one point. So they're not, that part they're not hurting for, but what I'm starting to see is these governments aren't taking advantage of interest, okay? So like, whoever that person it is, maybe is not getting the rates they should get, so there's, that's, that's the only thing that's saved the counties these last, all five of my counties I worked on, you know, is the interest, is the interest income. Uh, sales tax kinda started to flatten out a little bit, uh, maybe not so much up here, but in other rural, more rural counties that are not around like, uh, bigger cities. So those are just, those are just things that I just noticed. So five percent of your twenty three expenditures, which is flat and somewhere with inflation, okay, is eight hundred and four thousand four eighty six. So if you think about unencumbered cash, and you think about where you're at, there's nothing wrong with revenue neutral, but how are we going to continue? And it may not, inflation may not hit you as much, you may like get different contracts, or you're working on different, you know, scenarios to help cut the costs a little bit, but some aren't. And some are, that eight oh four is eating them alive.
Sure.
Because they have no cash now. And that's what I'm, I'm starting to see, that's why I wanna get my art, that article from Utah, because that's what happened. Is people got very lax about the way they, um, they're locking their dollars, they got really lax on all the other stuff, and before you know it, cash, cash, uh, was gone.
So it's like any budget, though, the more you stay on top of, which I think we did a pretty good job here, I know, so we know kinda where we're at all the time, but you're right, if you don't, it'll nip you in the butt at some point in time, then you're in trouble.
I mean, same as, as home, I always say that, you know, it's just like at home. Okay, so I'm just gonna go through what I had here, and then you can ask me questions, like on those back sheets, with, I mean, I think they're, I think they're pretty accurate. What I did here is put them in a notebook, so you have everything that I have given you so far, and they're in order, okay? And then you do have some electronic encase, like the Excel spreadsheet, if you wanna go in and look electronically, you can. This first one, all it is, is just a summary of where you're at, uh, I put the check marks to make sure the budget matched to it. Uh, still, we don't have reconciliation, but we're doing the best we can to get them.
I think on that, uh, twenty twenty three.
Yep.
Levy down there says ten point two, it should be nine point six. Because for the three or four years, we've only gone with the nine point six. On this page?
Yeah.
Yeah, two thousand twenty three budget amount levy drawn to, yeah.
It should be nine, it should be the nine point six. Cause on the previous sheet you've given, right there. That should be, it should be nine point six. Because for twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, and twenty five, it'll be nine point six.
It's got the mill levy right, but it doesn't have the.
Okay, I'll, I'll look, I'm not, I'm not sure I have top hands.
So Scott, the number you have on two thousand twenty two mill levy, forty eight point two oh four, is that the new projected mill levy? Cause that's not our current.
If you go to page, if you go to page thirty two.
Am I getting ahead of it here?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll wait and you can.
You're fine, you go to page thirty two, that's where that number comes from. So you know the dollars are locked, and so every time the assessed value goes up, the mill levy goes down.
So that has our new numbers, that's what I wanna.
From fifty three oh forty eight to forty nine eight ninety four to forty eight two oh.
Yep.
Yeah, just like that, assessed value just got me, they, they lost four point eight mils just because of assessed value. Isn't that amazing?
So what, in, in Pratt County, in their property, what changed in their property, was it just the gas and, and it was that big of a drop?
Yeah.
So I notice, I mean, again, back to us, we don't have.
I mean, I, I called the state guy, I talked to him for about forty five minutes, he's been doing this for forty five years.
Cause gas and oil are two big ones, is that?
Gas, oil, pipelines.
Pipelines.
It's not explaining to them about railroads and all that, they're all state assessed, you know, so how, I, that, that was kinda funny story, I told them, I kinda forgot about this. But see, the railroads used to do these budgets for the counties, because they didn't want the, they didn't want the mill levy to be, you know, messed up, or the, or the budgets messed up, because they had such, so much at stake.
So, like, averaging. So like Evergy and all them, they're state assessed also, are they not?
Yeah, there, there's, so we like utility companies, pipelines, railroads. Farmland is not directly assessed by the state, but it's, they've got parameters that have to be used to, with its crop or... Okay, I'll, I'll check that number.
I guess the reason I'm asking that is the volatility in Osage County is not near where it is in most counties. Because most of our land is either ag or residential. There's not, or you got commercial. There's not a bunch of extracurricular stuff that fluctuates.
No, I, I, I tell you truth, after that happened, I don't know what is faulting. I mean, because I wasn't expecting a fourteen million dollar drop to start a budget at nine hundred thousand and a hole. You know, that's what got my attention. And if it can happen in gas, can it happen in other areas? You know, and that's what the eighties really showed you. My dad, the only part of the bank, it almost closed because everybody's, you know, literally almost one hundred, lost their farms from the eighteen hundreds, you know? And so it's, it's just, it just, I'm just trying to make people aware that it can change quickly. Okay, the next page, I don't think, we've covered a lot of this, like five and six of the debt level. I'm not going to probably mess with that and keep going to page seven. So this is general fund. I didn't go in and, I didn't go in and circle numbers. Since the sales tax, I still don't know exactly. I haven't looked into it. I think John and Heather had talked about sales tax. You know, they got some stuff from the state of Kansas, some emails.
Yeah, well, and he had reached out to me and asked me about those reports, but I referred back to Linda and Laura to get the detail. Because the, the fund report I do is a summary. He was wanting the detail and I'm sure it's in there, but I don't...
So I'm just going to show you kind of where these numbers are at on the sales tax. We've got it broke out now. So if you look on page seven, I didn't circle it, but you see the one point two million we're estimating? I think that's a little high probably, unless we just don't have the numbers right. But it does, this is the only government that sales taxes went down. So there's something not, and we confirmed it with the state of Kansas. So I'm not, I'm still trying to figure out why that number's dropped. You see what I'm saying? Because I don't want to overestimate receipts. It's like at home, you know, you, you budget off. I'm just hoping, out of the blue, Jackson County reached out to me on their budget side. And they have estimated a lot of their revenues and they, the, the rep, this is, I never see this happen too often, but I'm just looking at their twenty-three budget, twenty-three audit. What happened is their receipts came in, I'm just shooting round numbers, eleven million, but they budgeted twelve million in the general fund. Well, you can't do that because if you budget twelve million and base all your departments on the twelve million in the budget, then, and you spend it, you got, you got some challenge. So there's about five hundred thousand difference. So it's, it's just something you have to, you know, just stay on top of, make sure the numbers are right.
So when you have the local sales, this is, this is only the portion that comes to the, not the one directed towards the jail.
Yeah, so if you go back to thirty-one, thirty-one is, was dropped in here, the jail point five. And this, based on what John didn't find with looking at these different reports. You started the year of twenty-three, and this only shows actual year twenty-three. You start the year in three twenty-three, four sixty-five. You see that number on the first line? And then sales tax receipts, the million twenty-three is what it showed. So you would end the year at one million three forty-six. And I don't remember, the first payment is...
That was for twenty-three?
Yeah.
And there's, so a half a percent, they collected a million? So if we're collecting, aren't we collecting one percent at the county level?
Yes.
So then we should, we should...
But keep in mind that the one percent with keep the county, that we don't keep the whole one percent. We keep sixty percent. Forty percent gets put back out to the...
So then our portion should be a tad higher than that.
Just a tad.
I don't think the general fund is right, so I'm not sure what's going on there. So we're still trying to dig into that.
On the...
On the general fund.
On, yes, so the sales tax for twenty-three is a little over one million.
That's right. I don't think that's right.
And for twenty-three, for the jail...
Is one million.
One million. So we should be a little higher than that.
I would think so, yeah.
So that's why you estimated the one point two?
So if it's, so if it's, no, so if it's one percent and you get sixty percent, then you're setting at one point two. I mean, you know, somewhere in that, yeah, somewhere in that range.
Because the jail's getting a half percent.
Because, yeah, the jail's getting a half percent, which would be fifty percent of the one percent. So to me, it would be closer to the one point two, but I'm not sure exactly what's happened with the reconciliations. Okay, but we're, we're working on it, okay? So that's where that number, it shows up at the budget this year as actual, so you know where, you know where that is at. The next page, on page eight, you had asked me about unencumbered cash. And I didn't, I didn't go in and circle all the cash numbers. But if you start in the first column of the general fund and you look at the second line from the bottom of the first line, you have three point six million at the end of twenty-three, if these numbers are correct. And the next one is two point nine, that's the middle column, and that's, you know, assuming where you're at. Now, it's going to change because of the sheriff thing, how we're, so twenty-five is going to change. So if you see the two zeros up on the right-hand column of twenty-five, down about six lines, there's two zeros, the sheriff and the detention facility. So that budget is no longer the general fund, okay? So based on this, if you would go to page nineteen, and I just get one of these packets of Sheriff Wills, and ask him to dig into this budget. Twenty, where I've got everything marked in, okay? So I just asked him, and I was pretty sure John had dropped the one fifty, the first number up there of Lake Patrol. We're going to go back and look at the contract, but I think the contract says you have to have a separate fund. I don't think you can drop that in the, I don't think you can drop that in the sheriff jail fund. I'd like to, because I just want to get it all organized into the same fund. But I, I asked Sheriff and he didn't think so either, so he's going to go look and see.
It's separate on all of our other, it's separate on our...
Oh, I, I've always had it separate, but I was, I was hoping that, you know, we would just talk, John and I was talking about it. If we want to look at that, the rest of these are like, so if you look at those first two lines, Lake Patrol and then Transfer is, the one forty-eight is the cash balance. So see, when you take these, these individual funds that are sitting there on their own, not only do they have what the receipt will leave for that year, but you'll also carry over, if you can transfer, you can carry over the unencumbered cash also, okay? And then they have the Melbourne, Melbourne, Quinamo. You have the school resource officers. And what I think is not quite right here is if you go down here where I've got the bracket in the expenditures, there's still two hundred thousand and fifteen thousand and five hundred thousand as reimbursement. So the way I understand this, that, we had those in there because of budget credits went into the general fund because they weren't recognized as receipts. So I'm going to have him look that over, but I, we are now showing that as receipts. So you can't do, you can't do receipts and budget credit. You see what I'm saying?
Those will just come off. Those lines will just come out because they're being reflected up there in the Melbourne and Quinamo.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, but I just want him to look at it. The five hundred thousand is if you house prisoners, I believe, what that reimbursement for housing, the way it was done there. And that's usually shown as a line above as receipt. Now, I was just at Jackson County last week and their prisoner care, this is, and again, I'm not trying to be Debbie Downer or Sky is falling.
No, but you tell us every time you're here.
Well, I want you to understand, this is really important. This is, this is a trend right now that is not good, okay? Because every jail I do, Ottawa County should close their jail, okay? Totally. They've got three hundred thousand left on debt. They've got to pay out the general fund. They've got, they ship their five prisoners they typically carry now to Mitchell County. It's cheaper for Mitchell County to actually house their prisoners than them. And again, I'm just saying, I've done this long enough that when there's trends like this happen and I've got a client that has that situation, you want to make sure that you're, you're not going into a reactive situation once it happens. You're being proactive and, and I think you have a very proactive sheriff because these, like the contracts, you know, for the school resource. But what if the Department of Education comes in and says, you know, slice those? You know, I'm just, I'm just saying, so what happened, I was talking to the sheriff up at Jackson County. Their receipts went from nine hundred thousand to six hundred and seventy-three thousand. So I had to figure out how to fill in the hole of two hundred and six, whatever that was, two hundred and sixty-five thousand in a levy fund, just like this, okay? So that's why the receipt side up above is so important as the expenditure side down below. Because if you want to stay revenue neutral and you have sale tax running out in four years, then how are you going to fill that hole if the receipts up above, you see what I'm saying? The receipts above aren't, and so it's just something, I mean, sheriff understands that. I mean, I, he and I have talked about it quite a bit.
So then are you going to take those three lines out?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just showing you how, how it came over from the general fund, okay? Does that make sense?
Sure does.
Okay? And again, I'm not, I'm not, I just think that's my job is to make sure that we are looking in the horizon and saying this, not saying it's going to happen, but, because what happened is I asked the sheriff to, I had just got the jail closed. He was running six hundred thousand a year as jail receipts. In Slane County, you know, I had told you, built a jail. And the problem right now is nobody wants to help the other sheriff, okay? That's what I'm running into. Because if Ottawa County helps, or if Jackson County helps Ottawa County get some more US Marshal prisoners, and not just, I mean, prisoners aren't going to go away. There's going to be, there's always going to be. Then that's going to take his resources of the two sixty-five he lost and take them somewhere else. You see what I'm saying? So I'm just trying to figure out how to help sheriff, you know, continue here, continue. Because I told him, well, you might talk to Jackson County, but I don't think Jackson County can talk. You see, because he wants to get as many prisoners as he can to get his hole filled in. So anyway, that's just, that's just something I've, I've run into here the last month. Anyway, so the levy on page eight, the general fund, after the sheriff has taken out, is one million nine fifteen oh seventy-five. So probably the best place to see the differences here is go back to page one. And the bracketed number up above there on the first line in column P is the amount of levy reduced in the general fund. And it was put in down below in line thirty-one of the same column to the sheriff fund, one million six oh two. And that's the, that's the levy that matched up. Now, that levy, taking out those backed off expenditures, that levy's going to go up. Okay?
You mean that, the two hundred, the fifteen and the five hundred are taken out, so the number...
We're counting done on the receipt side because we're reducing expenditures and we've got it, you know, up above. Also, we just, these are just, we're just, that's why I want the sheriff to look it over to make sure these things look, look right. Because that's another big thing as you open, when's, when's it due?
Christmas.
Christmas, okay. That's the other thing, you know, as, as this happens, just like what you're talking, whether it's contracts or all that, you know, just managing that. Because this is quite a bit bigger than what you've had. So just making sure the expenditure side is, is very, very challenging, so. Okay, so that's the differences and that's what will happen. And that may change, that fluctuation may change a little more once we get the numbers right back in the sheriff's fund. It could go a little more levy on the sheriff, less levy on the general, okay? Page nine, I'm not going to really cover nine, ten, eleven. You can see on nine where the, bless you, bless you. You can see on nine where the sheriff and the detention facility are backed out. And I think the reason those numbers will go over there like that, because that's the way they were shown here. So that's why I want to get those right with the sheriff, the two hundred thousand and the, and the reimbursement for housing, okay? I don't really have any others. We went through the last time, you know, departments and got where you kind of wanted them. There may still, you have to remember, like I said in the email last night, all we have to do by July nineteenth is to make sure you're at where you want to be on the mill levy, which are revenue neutral. So that, that's not a problem. And just make sure that we got that all filed, okay? Now, revenue neutral rate, when you exceed it, there's a little, there's a couple more steps there. You want to make sure you don't mess up, okay? So but you, it seems like you've got cash. Just sit here and think about this a little bit. I don't have the audit report here. If you go back and look at your audit report on cash...
I have it, do you want?
No, I'm just, I'm just going to talk big picture. So just think about this, okay? So you have federal owned land entitlement, okay? That is, and I could, I could actually show you that, but that's four hundred and eighty-five thousand, I believe it was. Let's go back in the ledger so we can talk. Get you in the right spot here. Okay, so page twenty-one, at the end of twenty-three, this is, okay, so forever, this has been considered general fund money, even though it's in federal owned land entitlement, okay? So it can be technically used for anything. So at the end of twenty-three, you have three hundred thousand and you're getting in ninety to ninety-five. And anyway, I think the contract goes for another year, maybe twenty-five. I forgot to ask the sheriff that. But you can see, so there's, there's a reserve you have, okay?
Well, the federal, federal owned land entitlement is not the sheriff's fund. That's Lake Patrol. This is for the lakes.
This here is the tax dollars in lieu of you can give for the lakes.
Right. So the sheriff probably wouldn't know anything unless he's looking at, yeah, that's, that fund stays...
Oh, no, I didn't have him. This is just your, this is your fund.
Right.
This is the fund that forever, since the nineties, when the boiler was going to blow up, that they kept us money here in case the boiler blew up. Well, I don't think the boiler ever blew up, but they were being proactive.
And your information is off of the bank, bank deposits and stuff?
It is off, the receipt side is off of confirmations that we have with the state and federal government. So the receipts should be right. The expenditures, I think they're, you know, right, but they're still not reconciled totally. So they're still trying to do the bankruptcy sounds. But this is, this is pretty close. I mean, even if it's off a little bit, you know, it's somewhere, yeah. And so then you, you think about that. If you go over to page twenty-two, I'm just jumping around a little bit, but I wanted to show you, I wanted to show you what hash you have setting here, okay? So if you look at the top of page twenty-two, this is the road machinery fund. Some of the road and bridge departments are really hurting right now, like in some counties. Pratt, again, they got all gone, they got challenges. They have nine positions open. And the rest of their work staff is sixty and open of twenty-eight employees. So it's just something to think about. And the way this fund works is if you did get in trouble, like with operations of the road and bridge fund, this is actually a fund that can be transferred back to the road and bridge to help, you know, with that, with that fund.
Which were in good shape there, Rod, so there's always that.
You've got almost a million bucks sitting there. Now, that's only two graders, I mean, or, or whatever, I mean, equipment.
It looks good.
Huh?
It looks good.
It looks good now. Then you look at your inventory and go, oh, yeah. And that's, and that's something that looks good because like Pratt, they have a really good mechanic. And their graders, some of their graders have twenty thousand an hour on them. And usually you don't run over, usually ten, you know, ten to twelve out thousand hours, so.
So we're blessed with a good mechanic also. We've got, there's things in place for all of that now, so.
Okay, so the other place is capital outlay. And you have, you know, a fairly, let me see here, I'm just jumping, I should just go in front of you.
Could you start at the beginning?
Yeah, let's just go back, let's just go back to page twelve and then I'll look through the rest of it. And then we'll go to the, the supporting worksheets. I don't know how much time do I have? Do the next thing on the gym?
Plenty.
A little bit. Is it ten thirty?
It is ten oh six.
No, I mean, it's ten thirty, am I...
Well, you had to leave by a certain time.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay, we got time. Okay, debt service, I was just circling cap, in all these funds, I, I don't know if I circled them on all yours. I just circled it so I'd make sure... But on twelve, that's the debt service fund and that's based on the payments for principal and interest. And I believe that is the road and, is that the bridge? Bridge money, I believe, six point eight million on page five.
No, grid, where's the loan?
That'd be the bridge loan, yeah, okay. So, uh, that one's setting pretty good. You've got plenty of cash there, because you usually try to make sure that seventy-nine oh seventy-eight, the twenty-five column, make sure you have at least half of the interest payment that comes through in the first payment, so that you don't run out of cash. Uh, the next page, thirteen, road and bridge. Uh, the way it's set up and what they gave us, uh, if you look at the cash, I didn't circle these, but at the bottom, you look at the cash in the first column, uh, second number from the bottom, the first column is eight oh three. The middle column's eight seventy-two and the circled number, I circled anyway, is seven eighty-five. So you're, you're setting, you know, steady. I don't know if you're getting all the roads done or things you need to get done. That's the other question that pops up, you know? Uh, some, some of the.
Everything they budget for, we got done. So everything they budget for each year, we've gotten done.
Yeah. Some of the counties that have more low maintenance roads, they've really had a rough, rough year because of such a wet spring and so much water.
So the issue we have there is we're just, we only have county roads.
That's right.
Townships take care of those other roads, so that, it's goddamn bad. I mean, that, the county takes care of our portion of roads, but that doesn't take care of the township.
Those townships will be, I'm sure they've probably been out of money or run out of money in the road fund.
Correct.
Have all of that popped up. Uh, fifteen is the next one, is ambulance, I believe.
Yeah, while we're on that, let me ask you something. So what can, or is there anything, from a county perspective? We have our county roads.
Yeah.
Township has their roads.
Yeah.
But if a, in a case like where we have all this rain and all this, what can the county do? Or is there something the county can do to help townships when that happens? We can't, are we allowed to divert funds? We can't divert funds on the sheriff's account.
I don't know. If you could ask, do work for them, I'm pretty sure, and probably be a version of cost or something like that.
But how would you be able to do that when, again, because our staff is taking care of the county roads? Because we still have, how many miles of roads we have, Fred?
What's that?
Of county, just county roads that we take care of.
Hundred and fifty basically, but that's paid to grapple boats.
Right.
So.
So we're taking care of those roads with four greater operators, two greater operators and the rest of the crews, so.
Yeah.
It's not like they're overstuffed at the county to go out and do that. But I was just thinking out loud, is how, is there, how can it?
Probably, it's probably kind of like what you do with the road and bridge to the, uh, solid waste where you reimburse, you know, people, help out.
Which is what we do now, so.
It's only fair, if you think about it, if you've got a township sitting out here and countywide is helping that township, there should be some kind, because that just benefits that, those people that want township. So there should be probably some kind of agreement there. I don't, I don't know if you have any agreements on hand of how you do that.
I don't think we have an agreement. I think what we do is when we have somebody in an area and they're free and they see something that needs to be done, they just do it.
Glenn would be a, I mean, you guys talk to Glenn very often, but Glenn would be an excellent resource there to ask how that's been done in the past. But I know, I know it's, I know it's happened.
That's where most of my information comes from, when I talk about that. And Ryan is very good about it, so.
Ryan, Ryan's running now, but when you have somebody that's been here fifty years, they.
Absolutely, so, and that's how it's always been done.
Now, I don't know if I told you all this, you're all new here, but, ah, probably when the tax lid was voted down four years at the end of the nineties, I was asked to call all the townships by the commission. That's probably the one, Fred.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I called all the townships and asked them that are said that the county was going to buy them out, you know, because that's the way it has to work. If you go from a county unit, from a township system to a county unit system, I did not get very good readings on the other end. It was, uh, pretty nasty. Uh, because what you have to do is you have to buy out the term or the value of the equipment. So if they have one grader, see, that's, that's a conversation that's happened so many times. You have, I don't know, how many town, how many graders you've got, some townships, sixteen?
Sixteen townships.
Sixteen, I think it's sixteen. So you have sixteen cat graders, let's just say, sitting over here. And you've got, how many at the county?
Four.
Four.
So Marion County is a county unit system, which would be different than yours, because they take care of everything and the townships are nothing. I mean, their budgets are probably like a thousand bucks, okay? But that conversation is how do you buy them out and pay for sixteen graders, fair market value, all that? And I went through that whole calculation, probably late nineties, early two thousands, to talk about that. And that's just something people went back for, because the townships love it, because the farmer can go get the grader and go fix his road, you know, down, down the road, so.
Well, I think that's probably when it was put on the ballot, about that time was it not, Fred? It was put on the ballot in OSH County, it was voted upon and it was voted by the people not to have, right?
Anyway, that's, that's, I think there could be some kind of an agreement, you know, to protect you maybe, or to show transparency is, you know, if it doesn't become, you're having to help no more. You're probably, I'm not a attorney, but you probably should have some kind of written agreement with the townships that says, you know, this is how we're handling it. Okay, fifteen is the ambulance and I believe, check that, the contract is still the same for twenty-five. Isn't that right?
I think it's up to me this year, it's supposed to be.
Oh, this year, okay. Well, we might, I don't know if that's going to change, we might be.
So it, uh, ends in twenty-four or ends in twenty-five?
Anyway, that's, that's, that's the only question really there is, is, you know, when is that? Okay, uh, the next one, and she, whenever she find it, just holler. The next one is appraisers cost and cash here, um, has dropped a little bit from twenty-three to twenty-four to twenty-five. That's, sometimes that's, that happens because they don't end up spending. The person, I don't know, are they full on people there? Because there's quite a bit of difference between the one eighty-five and twenty-three's personnel services.
Couple spots open, I believe.
Couple, mm-hmm, yeah. Anyway, uh, that, that one is still, still okay. Uh, like, you know, that's something too, we need to make sure we're always showing the personnel services at a full position are what you consider full. Because if you don't, if you, like, it really shows up in that road and bridge in Pratt, nine people makes a lot of difference in that personnel services. And if you don't fund it at that, then you, when you start adding them back, uh, or get, add them back, employee benefits and that really, really goes through the roof. Uh, sixteen, this one's a little tight, but I think we're okay, this election fund. Uh, this one had, you know, there's no levy in twenty-three. We levy twenty thousand in twenty-four and the cash at the end of twenty-five is three hundred and forty-eight dollars. Now, I don't think probably she's going to spend more than what you will in twenty-four, because twenty-four is the presidential election. So it'd be probably more like twenty-three, so you'd be at fifty-nine, so I'm not too worried about it. You see what I'm saying? The cash, uh, there should be enough cash there hopefully to take care of that one. Employee benefits, John got with, uh, Mr. Watkins, is that his name?
Yeah, Watkins.
Yeah, Watkins. And, uh, these numbers, uh, he went through, I think the only thing that changed a little bit, uh, you've got a pretty good cash reserve there, you've got medical insurance premiums that are quite a bit. The reserve there is more than what was spent in twenty-three. Um, they seem like this would, this would work and the levy stayed the same. So this will be something we'll have to monitor as we go forward to make sure we're, since you've kind of switched to this. Page seventeen, uh, health fund. Most health funds right now, um, I think I said this maybe last time I was here, you know, they're in a, they're in a, trying to get back to where they were before COVID. And so some of the grants, uh, aren't as great. This one here has plenty of cash. And the kicker here is the only way to get cash out of any fund is reduce the levy. Okay, but you don't really want to reduce the levy, because then you, the first year you lose state funding, uh, the state formula grant. Uh, and, uh, I'm not sure it really does the health department. So that's something you can think about. If we did get back in the tax lid days, there were some of these funds that had extra cash like this. And that's what I was saying earlier, you want to get the mill levy to the mill levy, you know, because you can burn through cash, you can make the mill levy work, but you can burn through cash. Now, this is not the case here, but it's something to keep monitoring. Noxious weed, um, on the bottom of seventeen, same thing. I think the cash is, is pretty good there. Uh, I'm not too worried about that one. The next page is special bridge, uh, this is, this one is another place you have, um, some cash reserves. Now, that's a question I always keep asking, because I get all these counties mixed up, but, uh, have you had any big, big bridge projects right now?
We got a bunch.
You've got, I mean, you've got your, you've got your, uh, seven, uh, six million in debt, you know, the funds that you're paying.
Those are the bridges we're doing currently. That money's sitting in the bank drawing interest and we're building, they're doing probably one or two bridges a year.
Two years, okay. Are those, are those eighty-twenty, ninety-tens, or are you paying for?
Uh, they're eighty-twenty's or ninety-tens.
I think it was projected maybe up to ten bridges.
Not all of them, but.
Wasn't it projected up to about ten bridges?
Yeah, it'll go up some from there now. That's what the original numbers were, but then with the funding they've got, matching grants and stuff, it's going up. We'll have a lot more bridges done than that.
Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah. Okay, uh.
But this money, I think if I recall from listening around, the special bridge money is for when they get a call about a culvert or a bridge that isn't on the bond, that's where that one is.
I really happy those, the, the half, the half, uh.
The rail car deals?
Yeah.
They're using those quad.
Yeah, that's what they use this a lot for in many counties.
That and, uh, box cords and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Tubes.
Yeah. Okay, uh, the bottom one is the special levy waste disposal. I think we're in pretty good shape here. Uh, if you look at their dumping fees up there, uh, it's kind of the six hundred and thirty thousand in twenty-three, we're only estimating five hundred thousand. And we still have a pretty good cash reserve at the end of twenty-five, so I'm not sure if we really need to do. Now, this went in, in other counties, it's really becoming a problem. And maybe even increase the fees, I'm not sure, I'm trying to figure out the difference. Uh, Ottawa County, I'm, we're looking into, the first area of solid waste utility is a really nice, um, county owned slash city, uh, you know, like a transfer station. And it was built in the nineties. And I was trying to figure out with Ottawa County, because they're paying this guy who owns the landfill, one point seven million dollars a year, something like that, to handle all that. And I'm not sure it's in the best interest of the county. So that's something you always kind of keep, yours is different, but it's just something to always keep monitoring the contracts. And you have, is it ham, is it hams or holters or?
Hams.
Hams, is that contract?
Yes.
Coming up, or is it?
No, we just renewed it last year, if I remember. It was last year.
What's the term on that, how long is that?
Probably a three year.
I'm thinking three years.
I was thinking three years too, I could be wrong. And you was talking about the ambulance one, I was thinking that was a five year, four, five year. I think it's next year, the year after.
Twelve thirty-one, like twenty-one, and would automatically renew each year for, um, starting June forty-one, so.
So it's on an annual?
It's on an annual renewal.
So they just automatically renew that whatever the fund is until, unless it kind of lasts or something different?
I know there's a lot of changes within agreements, but they're right as different in this than what is current.
So at some point in time, we'd probably have them come over.
Well, and if it's an annual, we probably need to continue to.
It'll be tough, though.
Yeah, we might just check, make sure it's, sure it's not something that jumps out, gets us, you know, make sure, I'm sure it's the same price. Some of these, some of these, you know, got a, and a inflation, uh, factor. So like if it's five percent of seven sixty on the ambulance, or whatever that number was, I think it's seven sixty. Uh, it could potentially be added, but I don't know if this one, I don't know if this.
I know we don't have that.
Yep.
The problem with those contracts is they don't take into account if it goes the other way.
Yeah.
And so if you want to have that contract, then we'll have a yearly contract by the other night. I, there's, because they don't give you back the other way.
Okay. Page nineteen is the sheriff, we already talked about that. Uh, Sheriff Wels working over, I told him to mark it up and send it to me. Uh, so we'll try to get it a little closer, uh, to where it's at. I think with this all said and done, this is really, uh, more I've thought about this, I've worked with these other counties, this is really going to help you manage, you know, the sheriff, the jail, the total cost, the personnel. Personnel, you know, I've told you that before, but is around fifty-five to sixty-five percent of, of a county. So like you can look at any operation, jail is very high intensity personnel. So that's a big, that's a big number. Uh, so anyway, you can, we'll, we'll, when we get the numbers, we'll, we'll put them in. And, uh, page twenty was the one I was looking for earlier. You have, I just made a note about to the side, need to track these in twenty-four, twenty-five. Try to match up the capital expenditures that you want out of capital outlay, uh, into this fund. That was the one where, I don't know where they were, I don't know where all they, you know, went.
Yeah, I don't know, because we, uh, we started it, we created it in twenty-one to start with twenty-two, but there's no recording of anything out of this for twenty-two, twenty-three. And I don't even know about this year, I haven't looked at it. But for some reason, it's not getting put, I don't know where the expenses are going.
Probably general fund, you know, that, and that's scary as in.
Because we've spent out of this for two and a half years now.
Capital improvement. We did not have spent out of it two years ago, they just created it last.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, we've approved it, but for some, it didn't get created in the system two years ago. And so even though vouchers were coming to the clerk's office, it wasn't getting, it wasn't getting put in it.
No, that's not the issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. So really the only way to do that is to go back and look at all the vouchers that were signed and find those capital improvement ones and then, you know.
Since most of it's general fund money, um, I would say there's bigger fish to fry and move forward. And let's get it straightened out from now going forward.
Yeah.
And we've got, yeah, we've got, bigger fish to fry. So then at the bottom of page twenty, I assume this money is built up, this is a pretty hefty balance in nine one one. But I assume it's building up because, uh, like for your.
It's going to be used one day, plus the stuff in the new jail.
They start using.
That is correct. And it can only be used for certain items, so, yep.
Okay, uh, twenty-one, we've already talked about federal land entitlement, uh, noxious weed capital outlay, doesn't have a lot left there. Twenty-two, road machinery, we've already talked about that, we've already talked about lake patrol. Uh, page twenty-three, uh, special outplay rehab and special parking reg. Uh, there's some balances, uh, I've just been blown away by Jackson County because of the casino. Uh, they have about four hundred thousand based on the liquor tax they get because of all that happens there. And they, they have so much money, they don't even know how to spend it, and, and, I mean.
Nick sent some our way, we could use it for.
Yeah, they're getting pretty creative there today, they did something to go, I don't know, can you do that? Yeah, it's, it's something. Twenty-four, racer D tech fund, um, special long form trust fund, these are all just very special. I think I said this last time on page twenty-five, when you build the bridges, I was telling Ryan this, use this forty-three, seven, seven, six on, get it back over there somewhere and use it, just get, get rid of it. It's one less fund we have to track. Uh, county clerk on the bottom of twenty-five, county treasurer on the top of twenty-six. The county treasurer auto reimbursement fund. Uh, one thing I learned the other day, I was speaking to the Kansas county treasurer and, you know, it used to be this fund had quite a bit of money left over that, then it was transferred to general by June first. Uh, all of them are saying that the state's requiring so much more and not really giving you, you know, money for that. So, uh, like the end of twenty-three there, if that balance is really right, seventeen thousand, that's not, that's pretty low compared to what it used to be. But that's one we'll, uh, continue on. I'm, I'm working with the county treasurer on rewriting the.
Does this money come in, uh, quarterly or annually or house as?
Man, it should be monthly, I think, uh, because it's, it's your operation is for your tag office.
What we're doing on behalf of the state.
Yeah, on behalf of the state, as an agent. So the treasurer can get paid and then you can pay expenses based on. Yeah, on behalf of the state, as an agent, so the treasurer can get paid, and then you can pay expenses based on even allocation, it's a very great statute, even allocation on, uh, maybe Joanne got pre-created back in the day, but, you know, like, part of her office, her computers, because she was overseeing the, you know, and, and something, the statute allowed it, but, uh.
So should, should she be paying some things out of this, or do you just let it build up and then, once a year, twice a year, you just send it back over as a reimbursement?
Okay, and I ask, I ask, I don't know, how many treasurer, they're, not all hundred and five, they're, but close, or they're deputies, and they do it so many different ways, I'm helping the new treasurer at Leavenworth County, they give, I think it's seventy-five percent is of their salaries paid out of the general fund with no reimbursement, twenty-five is paid. Every one of them has a different, different calculation. Here, in the past, it's always been that any people that worked in there got ream, they were in the general fund, but they got a reimbursement over to the general fund to cover their, their wages.
So then is the discretion of how to do the reimbursements, is that the treasurer's discretion or the commissioner's discretion?
No.
It's a treasurer, okay.
A lot of them have their own bank account, that's why I got in trouble here in the nineties was Joanne.
So here's a question I have on the treasurer's fund with what you just said. So there's something wrong with that picture that, because the state's still paying the same amount of money, so where's the money going? So if, uh, it don't matter whether you're adding services, because they're, same people are still, same people, so, how come the income has gone down if the state's paying the same money? Unless you're not offering, the only way that could happen is if you're not offering the services, and then somebody's out of, or somewhere else to get it done. As long as you're offering the services, the state's still paying the same dollars, it should be the same dollars, it doesn't matter how they come in or how you spend them, same dollar, unless, again, unless they've cut how much they pay. So maybe we need to contact our legislatures and find out if they've cut the funding that the state pays charging, but I don't think that's possible.
But if the wages went up and you're charging into that fund, even though you have the same.
So I can tell you in Osage County, I don't care how we just talked about whatever, I can tell you, they're paid out of the general fund, and then there's once a year, there's a check written or twice a year written, and it's not close to covering what the fund, what they're paid, so, that doesn't ever balance, but the question still is, if, if the income is different, why is the income different?
That's a good question, I, it sounds like, you know, the state, right now, they're, they're topping all those big talks, they've got three million dollars, so they.
Exactly.
They can talk it, but I remember just a few years back, they had nothing, and they didn't top that. So that, I mean, it's something to definitely always check the state contracts and make sure you're not getting rid of dollars as an agent, I, I.
Right, to make sure the fun, because that's my question is, if, if we're getting, and this is a question here, are we getting the same amount of dollars coming from that fund as we have in years past? Or do you see a difference in the revenue stream that comes in?
Well, for, so he's got.
And where was it changing?
Twenty-three, you have their total receipts is seventy-seven thousand eight forty-four?
Yeah.
Am I reading that right? So then, I just, I have this fund status report, so for this year, it shows that, this is the county treasurer auto reimburse? Yeah, it shows this year they, it's brought in seventy-three thousand.
Already.
Already, so it will probably, I mean, if it stays on track, it would be twice, and that, that's where you've got the one forty-five, uh, estimated for twenty-four, so that might be accurate.
So what I'm guessing is some of that receipt, I put it somewhere else.
Okay.
Okay, and.
Didn't get receipted in twenty-three, so when you, when they do the reconciliations, that's probably going to be updated.
It could be, yes, it could be more.
Yeah.
And that's why the net could be more, which is exactly what Jay's asking.
Yeah.
The problem is, when you go up in the past, over the last few years, and you ask, well, that's what the bank account says. Bank account doesn't matter.
Right.
You know, it's what's in the funds, and how you've got them allocated in the funds, and how you reconcile them with the county clerk.
Right.
Literally, if you were not doing any official bank reconcili, I mean, they were, that's what Joanne, Joanne hated computers, and then the lady that, uh, just went blind.
Lexi?
Huh?
Lexi?
Well, no, the deputy that just left.
Oh, Michelle.
Michelle, see, she was doing all those bank reconciliations and reconciliations of that part, but they weren't running through the computers, they didn't like the computers, so they did them manually. Well, then, that system didn't get passed on to the next people, so now we don't have a system in computers, or we don't have a manual system, I mean, except till Linda come along and we're starting to, yeah, anyway, yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, keep plugging later.
So that might not be as far off as what it looks.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and then twenty-seven at the top, that's the, that's the bridge bonds that you continue to, to use. Uh, I'm not going to go through a lot of this, but on twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one, these, you have to remember, are actual from twenty-three, so in twenty-three, it would still show like this, twenty-four, it'll still show like this for actual, if they're associated with the sheriff. In twenty-five, the ones you can will be over in the sheriff's fund, like the contracts and all that. Uh, the only other question, I think, remind me again, did you get the, you got all the ARBA on page twenty-nine, you got all the ARBA funds spent in twenty-four?
All of them are spoken for, whether they've written a final check or not. I believe the check came, or is coming out, if it's not out now, it will.
Yeah, so that's something we need to make sure they're actually checked out door before twelve thirty-one, twenty-four.
And that'll go to motor roll is what that one is, that's for the eight-hundred system.
Okay, I think, uh, that's it for the budget part, and then what I put behind here, so you can be kind of, on page thirty-three, John went back and calculated what the twenty-three actual was by department, and, bless you.
Thank you.
And, uh, you can kind of see, uh, each of the departments in the general fund, and then the cash reserves, the differences you have. So like in general funds, the main one is, I put it, I put it in a line called raised dollar amount, so like if you have a three percent raise, it's the hundred ninety-three, two oh five in the general fund, you see that number? It's, uh, column F, column F, and you go down right before the first grade.
Number twenty-one.
Yeah, right before the grade, and then that's what each one of those raises would be from three percent to eight percent, just so you have a kind of a idea. And then each of those funds, uh, what they, I don't have the increase on every one of them, but like Roden Bridge would be another one that you could go back and put the raise amount, the rest of them are just three other home funds, and you can see what, you can see what the personal services would have, and compare them to where you're at right now, I don't know if that's what you wanted, something like that, so you know if they gave cash to.
I just, my question that I had for you was on unencumbered cash, where are we compared to years past? Are we still at a plus side, or we, are we going negative on anything yet, or not?
No.
And it looks like we're still on the plus side.
All these reserve funds that you guys setting there, um, have not been used, you know, that's something you always look for, is if the general fund.
Right.
Let's just say it has two million, but you have no other resources than it, uh, the other funds, whether it's capital improvement, uh, your federal land entitlement, your Roden Bridge fund, and what you got in special machinery, if you don't have any backup there. So like Atston County, when I was, uh, just writing this stuff for the treasurer, she had, she got some questions about where the cash was. The general fund at the end of twenty-three was a negative seventy-four, so.
Which is why I was at, I mean, you've, you've taught me quite a few things over the years, and what I always pay attention to is that number, and my question, right, my question to you last meeting was, is there, under what our current numbers look like, was there, and I just used a number to use a number, and I think I said, is there a half a million dollars available?
Do you have your auto report?
That we could do for raises?
Uh, what, you know, you.
And that was just a lump number that I just picked out of the blue to throw out a number, but.
No, the bound one, just the bound one, there's that right there, twenty-two, yeah, first and sixth.
Um, you, and maybe it's in here, you created a document that showed us our cash reserves, and then you kind of wrote on it like, if you did three to six months.
Yeah.
Emergency fund for all departments or just certain departments?
Right.
And that, I don't know where that's at, but that was really helpful for me to determine.
Yeah, so that's what I did for Atston last night for the county treasurer, I said, you guys, I've not worked with you on this, but this is something that commissioners need to understand, you can't be negative in the general fund.
Right.
And, uh, so their, their total of the whole county in Atston is bigger than you.
I think population wise, they're a little smaller, but their budgets, their budgets are longer.
Yeah, it's just that they're like two hundred and fourteen, two hundred and twenty million, because they're up around that area, and their total unencumbered cash of all funds was six point eight million.
I think ours, ours was around ninety, wasn't it?
Yeah, you're, yeah, so, so what I was going to show you here, no, it's more than that, it's sixteen, okay?
Our big ones, because of what we have in our bonds and all that.
What you have to do is you have to go in, and so, into twenty, yeah, so your county funds are sixteen million to end of twenty-two. Now, we don't have twenty-three finalized yet, but just part of that, you have to remember, is you have to back out any capital outlay items, or capital improvement items, so you have to.
Bridges.
Ridge bonds are four point six million, so that gets you down to twelve million, okay? And then you look at the nine hundred, what are the nine hundred thousand, the ARBA funds, you look at all those like that.
That are already spoken for, I haven't met them yet.
But your general fund at the end of twenty-two was three million, and it's about what it was at the beginning of twenty-two. So twenty-two and twenty-two, it stayed pretty much the same. Overall, you went from ten five, ten million five in twenty-two, up to sixteen, but part of that is because of these different receipts that you received, uh, ARBA funds, these different ones that made it go from ten million to sixteen million. Uh, so what I, what I always do as I look at the overall, like you said, and I just, all you have to do is divide your total expenditures, uh, real quick here, you just took eighteen million, five, six, five, oh, nine, one, divided by twelve. Overall, you spend one million five thirty-seven a month, okay? Then, if you take that times three, it'd be four point six million, and you double that for six months, it'd be nine point two, okay? If you back sixteen and take forty, almost five million off that, you're down to eleven, and then you take ARBA funds off, which is another one point five, you're down to nine. So you're, you're right in that, and there's some others, you're like, you've got to take the special machinery fund, that's another million, that's not really for operations.
So tell me again, how'd you come up with that one point five million?
All you do is just take the total expenditures on your twenty-two auto report, so we don't have that number for twenty-three yet exactly, but just.
So it's not the nine point six million divided by twelve?
No.
That's actually the budget?
Yeah, so.
You're actually using a higher number.
That's a tax, what you're saying, that's a tax, no, you look at.
So the tax, when somebody sees nine point six million dollar, that's not literally the budget, that is the taxes collected.
That's like, look, like the treasurer, when I went and asked, this is a couple of years ago, well, we've got one million in this one account in bank, well, that really doesn't matter.
Because I don't know where we're supposed to be.
Because that's not matched up with your general ledger, and it's not reconciled, and that was the one where the web tags were going into one bank account, but the expenditure was being paid out of the other bank account, and if you matched it up, that one million was really probably three hundred thousand. You know, because they weren't, they weren't matched. Uh, here's what blows most people, and this is why I told the treasurer, and she, she understands it up there, she's a, she's a seasoned treasurer. But that's why, this, this number right here, if you look at your auto report, see, your cash is right here, unencumbered cash. But if you look down here, the total cash at the end of the year, it's twenty-eight million. So when a lot of commissioners or public look at this financial statement, they look, oh my goodness, you've got twenty-eight million in the bank. But what they don't realize is eleven of that is other entities, you know, it's taxes sitting there, it's state money sitting there, it's just, um, I can, I can, um.
I think that's where I agree with Jay, that it would be nice for us to see, maybe in the last couple of years, and where we're at now.
Okay.
On a hash, just for the county.
I thank God yours, I still have that, I've got the seven-year history.
And here's why I asked this, because this is important to me right now, so I, I'm, forget about all these other counties we talked about, let's just talk about Osage County. The real issue in Osage County right now is we're, our, um, employees have gotten older.
Yeah.
And they're starting to retire.
Sure.
So we're trying to hire new people, the biggest problem we have is our starting wages. Our beginning wages are so low that it's making it tough to hire people. So when I look at raises, and this is what I've done for the last four years, or three years, I've always asked for a dollar amount, and the reason is, when you use a percentage, the rich get richer and the poor get poorer. So how do you, if I look, that's why I'm looking for a number, because then I can take the dollar amount times the number of employees and give everybody the same dollar amount, and then that increases the bottom end of that to get it up so you can hire people. Does that make sense? One.
Thirty-four.
About one thirty, yeah, average of one thirty-five, sometimes it's one there.
So if you just go back to page thirty-three, and you know it's a percentage, you can look at any of those dollar amounts, right?
Right, because a hundred and thirty-five employees.
Divided by one thirty-five.
Right.
And so you're setting at fourteen hundred apiece, so if you want to give, I mean, across the board. And that's a, that's a three, that's a three percent, one ninety-three, the, the big one, three five oh, divided by one thirty-four is twenty-six hundred.
So about a dollar, it's two thousand eighty hours, so you got a little over a dollar an hour.
Yeah, per person.
Right.
So a dollar an hour is eight, is the eight percent?
It's not being more like a dollar and a quarter.
That would be two six, it'd probably be, let me look here. Okay, two thousand eighty is, okay, so if you looked at two seven nine, five percent, you take two seven nine, I'm just rounding it here, divided by one thirty-four, it's two thousand and eighty-two dollars.
So that's if you're using a five percent increase, that gave everybody a dollar an hour raise.
Across the board.
So if you went to the eight percent, then you're looking at a dollar and a half, basically.
More, yeah.
More or less.
Not quite, because a dollar and a half would be three, it'd be three thousand.
Right.
And there's twenty-six hundred on the last one, but like here, then you look at the reserve, so if you do the five percent.
If on, right, on H is three fifty.
And that's just, this is just general fund, okay, so you'd have to, you'd have to go in and all these other outline funds, like Roden Bridge would have several employees in that, so to break it between the funds, you'd have to go through them.
Right, where I'm getting at though is if you put it at an hourly rate, it lowers that bottom number to get it closer, and it doesn't affect the people that are making the more money, they get the same raise regardless, so they're not getting a higher raise. You know, if you and I are working in the same department, we've been there, whatever, but you're getting more of a raise than I do doing the same job, if you're using a percentage.
Yeah.
If your hourly rate's more, so, that's what I'm saying, if you keep it on a, on an amount, it makes it fair, and it gets the lower end up, which in turn is going to give you the ability to hire people, but that's my.
Do you have a, do you have a pay plan here?
Well, I, we've got a starting pay, and we've got kind of a schedule, and it needs to probably be updated a little more, but, we do know that what the starting wages are, we're not very good.
Based on position, or based on whatever the heck we feel like approving that day?
I mean, there's kind of a unwritten rule that most of the departments in the courthouse have come up with a pay plan that works for all them, that was done a few years ago, uh, we've kind of stayed with that. The starting wage is the one that, I mean, all through the county, I mean, the wages have gone up, but it's how do you continue that? But the big one again is, if I'm looking at coming to work at the county, I know when we started, I think the starting wage was ten dollars fifty cents an hour. Well, I tell you, for ten dollars fifty cents an hour, I can go to McDonald's and flip boogers and make.
Fifteen.
Fourteen, fifteen, so right now, the starting wage for a new employee at the county is fourteen seventy-five. I can still go to McDonald's and make more money and have a heck of a lot less stress than being yelled at or whatever, so how do we get the wage? And you're not going to do it by doing a three percent or eight percent, you're going to do it by doing an hourly amount that's weighted towards the starting wage to get people hired. As time goes on, they're all going to get the same wage increase, and even the people that are currently working at the county that have been there for twenty-five years, they're not going to get less of a raise, they're going to get the same amount if you're doing dollars.
So I only had one news, Pratt City, because they've been trying to get out of a hole, and they're, they're in a bit great shape, but I'm just saying, so they went through all their employees, and they drew a line at eighteen fifty, okay, across here. Anybody under that line of eighteen fifty got a raise, and may not got to the eighteen fifty, but they got a substantial raise to give them, because they were having, like, for example, they were having a hard time finding, they still pick up trash based on a guy on the back of the truck. Now, a lot, a lot of places do that, like in first, and they have, you know, the automatic, so they can't get anybody to run on the back of the truck, so they can't get their trash picked up, so they had to draw a line and figure out where are they going to pay so that they can give people.
To get that starting wage, because that's the key, is we got to get the start, because you can, when people start leaving, you're going to have to have the ability to hire people, if the wages aren't there, they aren't, they aren't there, I mean, we can talk about that.
I told this story, I came over from Pratt County, and I said, two years ago, and I said, Jenny, my wife, I said, uh, we've got the, starting EMTs at thirteen eighty-nine, and McDonald's is at fifteen, which one would you want to pick you up if you're having a wreck on Sunday? and McDonald's is at fifteen, which one would you want to pick you up if you're having a wreck on Sunday? I mean, you know, cause that's, yeah, anyway, you know what I'm saying? Okay, that, that kinda give you a guideline there. Uh, the next page thirty-four is, this is not, on page thirty-four, this is not, this is based on right now, but this will be a worksheet that we started doing last year.
This is based off the Atchison County?
Yeah, I think this, and then we have another Atchison County, but I don't have that one now.
Is this last year's, or you updated it with, with some of your, with some of the twenty-five proposals?
And then, what we did here, to the best of our ability, on the very right-hand column P, is what the final budget, I just went through with, with the numbers. What the department heads actually presented in column N. And then year-to-date expenditures on twenty-four, and I think that's probably, I don't know, it's Lauren, remember John or Lauren got that as a, probably June thirtieth, I would guess. So this kinda just, this kinda, I think this is as far as we can go right now with updating it, assuming that twenty-three, you know, twenty-three is the final on H, to the best of our ability, column H is the final twenty-three numbers. Really going back past twenty-two is not gonna give you a lot because, uh, inflation and a lot of things have changed quite a bit. But this, this will give you something to, to look at. And again, uh, these numbers, like I said in the email, these, these line items could change. So if we go in and you decide to do the technically five percent, but really you take it across the board, or the same for everybody, then we would go in and drop those numbers in to the, uh, to the departments. And then what happens is the place you adjust them would be unencumbered cash, okay? And I'll ask John, I think if you look on page, on column L.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
In N, for the personnel line item, you'd put what was requested by the department heads.
Yeah.
But in P, in the personnel line items, is it just what it currently is?
Yes, we did not, and that's, we just put it in, like, that's usually what happens, we just put in whatever's in there, and then if you decide to drop a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar raise across the board, we would just go in and put those amounts in the line items. I, it's really hard, and this is starting to happen, right, I'm trying to get, if every department comes in, not just here, but everywhere, and comes and says, oh, we're gonna give one dollar an hour, we're gonna give two dollars an hour, we're gonna give, and you've got all those lines that really are all over the place. And then, this happened at Pratt last year, the AM has put in seven percent, and then they got another four percent. So, no, we can't do that.
So I learned a long time ago is that between you and our counselors in government, keep it simple stupid. And that's do the same for everybody, then you don't have to, you don't have all this back and forth.
And then you can make a good decision at the end, you see what all the other budgets done, I mean, all the other line items. And then you say, okay, we have the ability to pay the three hundred and fifty thousand across the board, it's not gonna bankrupt the county, it's gonna be something you can afford. And then you drop it in, uh, based on what the current pay is, you drop in the three fifty, and line item, you've got your budget. But anyway, that, uh, I'm not, I was looking, uh, on page forty-two, I'm not sure, I'm gonna ask John on L, or Lauren. That's the unencumbered cash at the end, or with twenty twenty-four. And I don't know if that's off budget or if that's off your record, we wouldn't have that on your record today. They might, they might have taken it off one of your worksheets, I'm just mentioning, you still have your capital improvement money, you still have your federal, I mean, there's not a lot of changes in the big, and the general fund is still about the same. But, uh, anyway, this gives you something to chew on a little bit, and, uh, and then I think I put in this, I think this is what you were talking about earlier, I, I think Michelle had sent this.
Oh, you already got the K Camp now.
Yeah, the K Camp. Uh, something I, that, that's really interesting is, um, in this, when I get it marked up, I'm just gonna send it to all my counties and Pratt City's reserve thing. Cause there's really some good stuff in here on how reserves used to be looked at, and how reserves today is all ba, should be based on risk management. So like, what are your risks, so until you know what your risks are, you don't know where your cash should be, you see what I'm saying? Or your insurance should be, so that's, uh, I'll, I'll mark it up and, and I can send that to you.
Can I ask a question? Do you know where you have that, the, the Atchison County document that shows each department the percentage of change?
Yeah.
The reason I ask is I'm just looking at the final numbers on the end of your Excel. So twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, those are all what was actually spent. And then the adopted budget, I don't remember being that, it says the adopted budget for twenty-four is right at twenty, a little over twenty million. And the request this year is twenty-two million. So for me, it would be helpful to have that breakdown of each of the departments and to see what departments maybe are the ones that are.
It's not really departments, the reason that number, okay, so what happened at Jackson County is one of the commissioners was running, and the person running against him put an incredible ad in the paper. And what they did is when you don't understand the budget, they picked the, like that, twenty-two million, which is cash and expenditures.
I'm looking back on here to see where all the departments and what all.
So if you were looking over at twenty-three on column H, and you look at twenty-two on page forty-two, if you look at G and H, you have the final numbers.
Which page are you on?
On page forty-two. So if you look at G and H, you have sixteen million of expenditures, five seventy-nine, and sixteen million, one thirty-three. So that was pretty close, and that makes sense because you're trying to hold the line, you know, with where you're at. You jump over to the adopted budget, adopted budget is different than expenditures.
Cause the adopted has.
She has the unencumbered cash balances that are a part of budget authority, and the adopted budget is budget authority, not expenditures. So what you'd have to do is back off roughly the twenty million, almost twenty-one million, uh, and that's why we put cash next to it, it's thirteen million, so. I don't know, I'll have to go back and look, I don't know if I can give you, based on where we're at with reconciliations, I don't know if I can give you anymore, or any closer than where I've got you right there because of the way the, the reconciliation. Do you know, do you know if all the, have we got any closer on the data statement?
Yeah, we're gonna.
Pretty close on that.
When those two numbers match, then you know it's cash.
Yeah.
When they don't, but, so, I mean, you're talking about the guy that put the ad in the paper, if the numbers match, he's probably got a legitimate thing, but if he doesn't.
He took the total expenditures of one year in the budget, which includes unencumbered cash, and said the commissioner increased spending by thirty-two percent. Well, that's not believable.
No, cause it was already there.
That's budget authority, and this is, this is actual expenditures, so, yeah. I'll, uh, I think I've got it, I'll work on the best I can of bringing up the seven-year comparisons. I'll roll the years forward, the seven years of unencumbered cash, receipts and expenditures, wherever we are based on this right here, okay? And what you can do, you can look at unencumbered cash and say, here's what it's been, okay? Here's where our ups and downs are by fund, and then you can see the receipts and the expenditures by, I think I've got that under, I, I haven't looked it up for probably a year, but we can.
So I don't wanna beat you up on this, but I'm going back to page thirty-three, and I wanna make sure. So if we did an eight percent increase using that number, we have that available, and there's no doubt that in your mind, we're fine with that, and that's not gonna hurt us on anything.
Yeah, because that's general, for sure.
Okay.
And you're, you're looking at, you know, I told you it was three million, and beginning of twenty-two is three million two, at the end of twenty-two, um, it's set right there, cash reserve, two million, one forty-three after the three hundred and fifty.
And I'm asking that for a reason, because I just did it on my calculator, that's a dollar twenty-five per hour, which would take our starting wage from fourteen seventy-five to sixteen, which makes us very competitive, and it gives everybody in the county a dollar and a quarter an hour raise. That's why I'm asking that question on that number.
So you'll be able to get us the, the cash, um, I didn't hear what you said before we talked, but when we talked about the cash reserve and you had the three months or six months.
Oh, yeah, I could do that, I could do that much easier, I can just, I probably, I probably do that tomorrow morning.
I think you had that last time, was it at like six months, six point eight months or six point nine, almost seven months.
Pretty quickly, it's, you're setting there with probably six to seven months overall. And then if you looked at the general, well, let's just do that real quick, um, let me see here, can I have that, I'll rip it back real quick. I wanna just do the general fund, cause that's what you're. Let's just do the general fund, so if you look at the general fund, you've got in twenty-two, and this doesn't change a lot from year to year. Now, it will change in twenty-five because you won't be able to compare it, it won't be comparable anymore because the sheriff's over in his own fund, but.
Correct.
Yeah, you'll, you'll get a pretty good idea. So seven, three, four, oh, two, six, eight, divided by twelve. So in the general fund, you spend roughly six hundred thousand, six hundred and eleven thousand. So if you take that times, you take that times three, that'd be one point eight million, okay? If you take it times two, you get to six months, that'd be three point six million. So if you were setting at six, I'm a six eleven, I'm sorry. You take your, at the end of twenty-two, you take three million on fourteen, two nine three, divided by six hundred and eleven thousand. You get four point nine, so you're setting it right at five months in the general fund. Now, if you really wanna get technical, you have that, plus you have the federal online entitlement, which is another five hundred thousand of receipts. So, uh, that's gonna get you right over six months, and then you've got the cap, most of that capital improvement is general fund money. So that's another five hundred thousand, so you're setting it probably closer to almost seven months.
So a question with that, he was asking if there's the cushion for the raises. So in addition to that, what about sharing some of that with the taxpayers and lowering the no levy, even below the revenue neutral rate, even if it's a little bit, to give, um, some of that back to them if we've got more than the six months?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's up to, that's up to you as commissioners.
Cause we wanna have a good reserve balance, but if it's larger than what is recommended or needed, why not share that and give it back?
Here's what I do, let's walk through the rest of this budget cycle. You go to your budget hearing, and at that point, you can't raise it, but you can lower it. So if we know the num, I don't know if we're low, this is kinda gonna put on the back burner, you know, cause we're waiting for reconciliations now from the treasurer. But if we knew, um, I don't know, we'll know that in August, so that's the kicker. But anyway, I'm just saying, let's leave it worked at a revenue neutral, and then if we get to the budget hearing and you decide you wanna drop, let's just say, one mil, then you can drop one mil, you just can't raise one mil. So that can be something you could do at that time, and we would hopefully the next month and a half.
When is our next meeting? Is it the budget hearing, is our next one?
Uh, it'll probably be back and forth emails unless you have something else you want.
Right, and then we'll have.
Tell me the raise, or tell us the raise, cause I'm gonna be gone now for two weeks, I'll leave in Wednesday.
So sometime in August, we'll have the.
Yeah, we'll have the hearing, and I'd say, I would shoot probably, I wouldn't get too aggressive, uh, anything after August tenth, so it used to be August twenty-fifth, somewhere in that, that would be when you do your budget hearing. By then, we would know about a week, about a month and a half, we'd probably have a better idea of where, you know, the bank reconciliations are. And then you could look and see, uh, what raise you wanna get that's dropped in, we would know how that impacts the unencumbered cash. I think what, I think what we don't want is, we just have to remember that, it's not probably gonna happen right now, but you know, right here, the, I'm glad, I'm glad the general fund was healthy, cause that year, the employee benefit ran out of money in September, you know, that was what, seven hundred?
We addressed why that happened, though, so.
Seven hundred and seventy-four thousand was the projected. It started at four fifty, and it was gonna be seven hundred and seventy-four thousand.
That was unusual, but yeah.
Those things are made for the hard stuff. Okay, anyway, uh, anything else?
How did, you know, again, that was from predecessors, but how it ever happened is you're right, I mean, it did put it in a bad spot, but it, it's fixed and it should never take place again, so. And I, I agree with Heather, I mean, if there was money, but the bottom line for me is we have to make sure that we can hire people.
Yeah.
Um, and I think we've done very well for the taxpayers in keeping revenue neutral the last four years, so even if they don't see it, there's been a pretty big tax decrease for them anyhow, so.
I'll tell you one last thing, it's kinda interesting. At Pratt City, cities have a lot more flexibility than we have, because they have an electric fund. Now, their electric fund backed up, but they've gotta adjust it now, okay? And one thing I've learned from that is, you don't have as much money, but whatever your rate's set on anything you serve, any kind of service, okay? So like water, sewer, electric in that case, the state won't even look at you if you're in the bottom fifty percent of the rates across the state, I learned that, okay? They were in the bottom twenty-five percent, their water went up forty-eight percent over the next four years because they had to get above the fifty percent town, so that's one thing I learned. The other thing I learned there is city, that city takes care of their employees, they have twenty-eight department heads or leaders, and all of them are still there, twenty-plus years. And they have, they have taken care, their, their pay is very, and so that's one thing, and pay isn't always the answer. Employee benefits isn't always the answer, but it does take care of some of the.
It gets people in the door. I mean, you gotta, you gotta give yourself an opportunity to even hire.
You have to have a balance of both, if you're paying decent pay, but your insurance sucks, and people are having to spend more money a month to pay for that insurance, it's not a healthy balance.
Absolutely, we are kicking around. Okay, anything else?
With Les, Les is right on insurance, cause I remember.
I think all I'm asking from you is figure out what you want that number. See, just cause you drop that number in there doesn't mean you have to pay it, it's just to see where you're at.
Right.
And we can get that figured, and then I'll try to work on the, the unencumbered cash spreadsheet to even kinda see where that's at.
If these guys are okay with it, I would like to see us drop in the dollar twenty-five an hour raise across the board. I mean, but I got two other people up here, so, but if they're good with it, I would like to see us start with that.
I will respond later today. Okay, sounds good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good seeing you.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah?
What?
Okay, uh, these are extra, I don't know if there's like somebody you want, there's three times for someone.
Is that what's in our book?
Michelle, hang on to one of those, and then I'll leave one here and have.
Thank you.
With that being said, uh, I'll call this time a brief recess for a restroom break, what do you say, eleven, ten?
That's fine.
Uh, and then Fred, we can handle the PVC, so we'll just go PVC, right?
So we just have the two things from Michelle and PVC. So we just have the two things from Michelle and PVC.
But there have been a lot of trash came down with that rain, too.
Right. That's, yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Why don't you go through that? He does everything else.
Yeah, no joke, actually.
You want another board to be on? You need to appoint some.
Did you, uh, recess your...
Yeah.
Okay. We'll call to order the meeting of the Public Building Commission. We have one bill before us here, Fred. I'll let you look it up real quick. Michelle, in talking last week, um, the way these guys are sending in their bills, they're sending in the same bill twice, one signed, one unsigned, so we're going to get that stopped.
Yeah, because there were different people, and there was a delay in between the first line and sign one. And I just completely missed it and brought it twice. So the very last bill, um, that you have in front of you today is the difference in the amount. So it's a smaller amount to pick up that.
And going forward, we're going to make sure they only send one copy, make sure it's signed.
Especially the last one, so.
Yeah. Well, somebody had to sign off for somebody, and... Did you get a chance to look it over? Heather, have you looked at it yet?
No. So this number here is already minus the other items?
You imagine doing that job all day long?
Which one?
Scott's.
Oh.
I'd lose my mind. I couldn't do it. I wouldn't want to do it.
I don't mind because I work with numbers. I deal with them a lot. They might blow the job, but I would not want to be said murder.
No. Every day in how many different counties and cities, and I'm out. Hey, any questions on it? All right, I just need a motion to send this to the county commissioners for approval, but it'll be invoice number twenty-four dash oh five two eight to KBS in the amount of five hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-three cents.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I will move that we adjourn the PVC meeting.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.
And we will move into normal commission meeting business again. Good. Thank you, Fred.
Good.
I know what it is.
Are you interested in that?
Yeah.
You would?
Yeah.
Well, I move we nominate Fred Dieter to represent OSH County in the Northeast Kansas Library System.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Congratulations, Fred.
Thank you, Fred.
I know you'll serve us well.
There you go.
I think Michelle will probably get you some more information.
Okay.
She's got it.
Yeah.
From the water shed board, so.
Yeah.
Okay, speaking of legends.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, with that being said, uh, we'll need a motion to approve paying invoice number two four dash zero five two eight to KBS in the amount of five hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-three cents.
It's a moot.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There you go. Uh, personnel change. I will let you give some backstory. Here you are, Heather.
That one, um, I do not have someone in that deputy, or deputy position. Um, she's been there just shy of a year, um, has pretty much met all expectations that have been requested at home. There are some things that I still want to send her and they're not taught to do, but, um, there's never an issue. She runs the office when I'm gone. There's never second guest leaving or anything like that, so I feel that she is definitely good for that position.
Sure, okay. This is what I'm talking about.
Has she had her yearly increase yet?
She's not had one period since she's been here.
So this would include her increase for the year and everything, then? Her one-year service increase?
Yeah.
That's what I'm at, because I don't think, I don't remember ever seeing this name. I was looking at the sheet to make sure, but...
Uh, I just kind of lay off a, um, what they call the pass. I'm not believing instead that's, so... And that's something that's a little bit to be first deputy, but...
Right. She's going to be your first deputy. So it's pretty much a promotion.
That's exactly what it is.
So you don't, you don't have... Who was your first deputy? Was that Melinda? What is Courtney? As what? She's the second deputy? So what position does she have that's... Um, I'm trying to figure this out, and now you've got me questioning.
It's really affect the cows. She's more of a good elections clerk. And then, uh, deputy.
That was my question here.
Yes, I would like to go more, but you don't allow that?
I'm with you on that. Which that one we may do on two. Is that to review that? There's one handle separate that way, because you guys are sure.
Do we need to go back there, do you know this?
Well, this one, I think we're okay with it.
Here's what I was asking.
You're just saying that's confirmed request?
This is, this is correct, but I thought it might even be lower than what, that was my question.
If you're putting it as your first deputies, if you're doing it based on the numbers that everybody else is using in the office, it's still low, but there'll be another increase on that in August.
So are you guys okay with...
Can I do a intention to go like, and...
My question is this, why wouldn't we just up that the other fifty cents and get rid of the year increase that happens in August? And then that makes you even with the other one. It's one and a half dozen one way or the other, but it's, you're going to be right back here doing the same thing again.
So I will adjust this.
I mean, you're keeping it on the same level, which she's more than served her time to know that she's capable, so...
So with that being said, I will need a motion to through the personal favorable action form for, uh, uh, promotion for Tepes from clerk one to first deputy, effective six twenty-one, twenty-four, with the stated undocumented age increase.
You made that motion, or you needed a, or you need a motion?
I need a motion.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
To make that clear, can we start that at six twenty-one?
Yeah, that's what it is.
That's what I said, effective six twenty-one. Next, I would move we enter to executive session under non-직원 employee with all three commissioners and Michelle Morris clerk for a matter, let's say, five minutes. So we would return at eleven thirty. Motion's been made in second. Any all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Are you capable of... Okay.
So we've all had an opportunity to review this, that we've done, where's the one? You bring it back out?
No.
I slid it to you earlier.
I will need a motion to approve the personnel payroll action form brought forth by Michelle Morris for new hire, Kelsey Trigo, with the pay arrangement as stated on the form, start date to be seven twenty-two of twenty-four.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, I said aye.
I heard you.
In my mind.
I heard you.
Is there, Michelle, do you have another one for the one that's leaving? Do we not have one of those?
I do not. Can I?
I do, if we need to. I don't know whether we need to do that today, we can go next week, whatever. Since it shows we're hiring somebody for the same position, that's why I was asking that.
Okay, what else you got? And we will do the minutes next week. I told Michelle she was already snowed under, I said do not worry about it. We will approve the meeting minutes next week. I know it needs to be done, and it's very important, I'll get it wrong, but we were weighing her workload, and I said do not worry about that one. So that one's on me.
With this, just quoting from it.
Oh.
It was depositing that the second page is a receipt as to where I was directed to put it, which is general, the same as receipts, and then the front receipt, I was told that's where it was supposed to go.
Does this, this shows it went to a fire district?
So. It just need to be corrected, or it needs to be corrected, or.
How in the world does that happen?
Well, it's not supposed to, we, it's, I mean, I don't know if there's.
Did you bring that to our attention to get it changed?
She told the receiving person in my office that she was not putting it in there, that she was going to put it here. I was in meetings, so they didn't address it right then, so.
So this was a deposit.
Yeah, this is that petty cash fund that we found a long time ago, ability to assess it. Michelle had been harboring it within her office, of course, under our direction, and so I told her to get rid of it.
This was back when the treasurer switched positions.
And this is where our treasurer said that it should be stuck. We don't agree with that. We agree it needs to go to the general specifically, so we just wanted to let you guys know, I'll bring you up to speed on that money, and where it's at. I guess, well, you've already, did you guys already adjust where it's supposed to go?
No, like I said, this was just late Friday, so.
So really we need direction.
I didn't do anything with it at all.
I would ask her to put it back in the general fund. If she does that, then we'll get ahold of Josh and find out what we have to make sure it gets put in the general fund. It shouldn't be in the fire department fund.
At the request of the commissioners, all those were all agreements, are you in agreement, Senator?
I, I mean, it just, wherever it's supposed to go, I don't know.
Yeah, there you are, right there, perfect.
Yeah, is that petty cash fund?
Yes.
Yes, that was, I was told that that was going to be investigated at the very beginning when I first found that. I have not heard anything back from that. That was brought into my office the other day. I was not informed of what, where that was supposed to go, nobody mentioned anything. I had questioned a while back about it, I never heard anything, and then all of a sudden that came back into my office, I had not seen that paper, had nothing to do with what fund it was going into or anything.
It's not signed by her.
So.
So do you have an issue with just put, where do you want it, the general fund?
Yeah.
But to say, I said to put it in a certain fund is misleading, because I did not.
Well, you're the treasurer, and that's why it's dictated by the treasurer, so that's where.
But, that is not signed by me.
It's signed by Linda, so can we just, can we just do a different one, and we put it in the general, and then you sign it?
Yeah, we can put it into whatever fund, and that's what the auditor and the whoever you guys were having investigate into it was supposed to decide on where we were supposed to do it, because it was a petty cash fund, there were, it was found when I first took office, and nobody had any receipts to it, there was no beginning amount, no anything, and that's why it was supposed to be being investigated.
So was, did Linda maybe make the recommendation for the fire district, or how, how the fire district get it?
I would not ever think it was supposed to go into the fire district.
Okay, well, who printed this form?
That would not have been me, that had nothing to do with my office, it was already done prior to me even seeing it.
Let me see for a second.
So what, whoever Michelle visited with and arranged it with, I have no idea.
This comes from your office, and it's dated right here as to when it was done. We don't have access to this, because you don't.
Right, but my office would only put money into receiving as to where they were told to put it.
Okay, so where did Scott tell you to put it?
Scott never did talk to me about it. I was still waiting direction from that.
Okay.
And then this just showed up in the office the other day.
Okay, so do you, their recommendation.
And the receiving was already done and everything.
Their recommendation is just the general fund. Are you okay with that, or do you want to talk to Scott?
Yes.
Okay, can you print a new one of these for us? Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Okay, then I need a copy of that, please. So I, I guess my question is, is, it came from her office, so I guess my question is, why?
Receiving would be, but we only put things in as to how we're directed to put it in. That's like some of those other issues for other departments, needing sheets, and so that they know what funds and the line items, and all the items being fixed and corrected, so that they can have a more detailed receipt as to where their money is going and where it should be.
Okay, well, if you'll just create another.
And that's part of cleaning up the financial and stuff, getting it corrected from, from the previous years.
You want this?
Yeah.
Okay, if you'll just, I guess, print us a new one, and fill out whatever needs to be filled out. There we go. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Very good. Wasn't there some dailies or something from Laura's office that we were still needing, and then the, the budget stuff for the gentler keys and their motor vehicle report?
Dailies are looking pretty good. The motor vehicle stuff and remittance, a lot of entities don't have, so we're thinking budgets.
The remittance they should have, if I do not have updated contact information, then they need to call into the office or something. A lot of them had said they had given updated information to Michelle in her office. I have not received any updated information, so if they went out to the wrong places, I apologize, but.
But you didn't send them out? You didn't send them out, everybody that you had.
Yes, and if they haven't, I can resend them out. A lot of them came through on Friday, so, and before that, I had some people reaching out saying that they had received them, so I had started re-sending them out again.
Yeah.
Some of them were third time, but anyhow, the ones I didn't hear from on Friday, I can go back through and try to reach out to them and say if I don't have updated phone numbers, or a lot of them I don't have emails, I have sent them by mail to whatever address we have in the system, so.
Do you have like, is it in PDF type thing, or in files? In mail?
Yeah.
Like, you send that to me, so I can, I'm doing, I have it.
Okay.
But I still would like to know, you know, get their updated information, so that they are getting.
I can forward that email, I sent quite some time back, I always send it to OC because I haven't received it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? You guys have anything? Okay, Senator?
No, just the information about, I'll be by Zoom next week.
Yeah, I can hear her literally, make sure you get set up, okay?
And he's got a copy of the instructions with the ID code to use, to make sure, then I will have to have a code on my end.
Right.
I think I'm the same time.
What's up?
Where are you going from?
I'm going to the GOP National Convention.
Oh, neat.
Kind of a once-in-a-lifetime thing.
Right.
Tell Warren Jared we said hi. Maybe I'll send you my hat.
I don't think I've said that much crap in one day.
It'd be tough.
You know, it's like you tell everybody, in my opinion, they're getting us both, from both sides, I'll put it that way.
So anyway, anything that, I guess we are discussing next week, if I can get that stuff by email, I can either try to print stuff off, or just have it available when we have our meeting.
We'll make it a point to try and get you a full packet of what we got.
So when is Scott planning on, I didn't catch, I didn't, maybe I didn't listen.
He said August.
Sometime in August, because remember there was some department heads that come in and ask for stuff for their own departments, and I don't know if you guys have done any research on any of that, but I called some people to find out the different pay of different positions, and one that was way off in our county is the county attorney, so, and she brought that up, and, so we need to probably look at how you guys want to address that. And then there are some other areas too, that I had some ideas, and I even how to pay for them, but until we're ready to talk about that, to send forward, then that's my question, is when do you guys want to talk about any of that?
Well, we need to get Waco here, and Michelle that he's worked about.
I offered them, just to see if you can respond to that this morning.
Because the preliminary numbers with some of that insurance stuff looks pretty outstanding, looks like what we're wanting, I just want that.
Absolutely, I just talked to him last week, so, or week four last.
Yeah.
What was the date? By July nineteenth, we have to determine the revenue neutral rate?
We've already done that, so.
Okay, so then, are you wanting to schedule something for us to discuss?
We need to, yeah, we need to discuss it, but we probably need to get Waco here first, if we want to get that out of the way.
Yeah, we got to get all the information out there on the table, so we know exactly where we're at.
Do you want me to call him this week and see?
I'll go twenty seconds. Do you want to call since the twenty ninth?
No, financial box, the twenty second, but it's not going to be that long to do anyway. I think, I got financial box on the twenty second.
We're available twenty second, and we're twenty ninth, which one would you like?
Well, let's get up scheduled for the twenty second, I think, I wouldn't, that you guys agree?
Yes.
Even if we did it later in the morning, and get the financial box out of the way, and schedule them.
So with Waco, we're getting update, because he'll have about, well, four, four months worth of data.
They'll have a pretty good idea where we're at.
Well, it's in the August, so he should have about six months worth of data.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the first six months are always going to look a little better, because you have all the deductibles after that, so, depending on that, but, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's enough out there that we can see kind of a good idea, and we're returning, because the main thing is to make sure we're positive and not negative.
Yeah, well, she'd sent out Jessica somebody email a few weeks ago, or maybe it was a voicemail, but the percentage and the threshold were a little bit under of what was projected, so.
The way we funded it, we funded it where the county could not lose this year, but that's, we want to fix that moving forward, so.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, say that?
The way we funded it was the county could not go, it could not possible go into the, into the red.
Oh, well, because we did the maximum.
Exactly, so what we'd like to do is back that up, if we have the ability to do that moving forward, but we
the budget stuff, or any different keys in their motor vehicle report?
Dailies are looking pretty good. The motor vehicle stuff and remittance, a lot of the entities don't have, uh, so we're thinking budgets.
The remittance they should have. If I do not have updated contact information, then they need to call into the officer or something. A lot of them had said they had given updated information to Michelle in her office. Um, I have not received any updated information, so if they went out to the wrong places, I apologize, but, um, I don't know.
You did send them out. Everybody that you had.
Yes, and if they haven't, I can resend them out. Uh, a lot of them came through on Friday, so, um, and before that, I had some people reaching out saying that they had received them, so I had started resending them out again.
Yeah.
Um, some of them were third time. Uh, but anyhow, the ones that I didn't hear from on Friday, I can go back through and try to reach out to them. Like I said, if I don't have updated phone numbers, or a lot of them I don't have emails, I have sent them by mail to whatever address we have in the system, so.
Do you have like, is it in PDF type thing, or in files? In file?
Yeah.
And you send that to me, so unless I'm doing, I don't have it?
Okay. But I still would like to know, you know, get their updated information so that we're getting...
I can forward that email, I sent quite some time back. I always send it to you, so I can, because I, I have received it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Good? You guys have anything? Okay, Heather?
No, just the information about, I'll be by soon next week.
Yeah, I can hear a little earlier than I should've said, okay?
He's got a copy of the instructions with the ID code too, to make sure I know, then I will have to have a code on my end.
Right.
Um, I think I'm the same time.
We're traveling.
What's up?
Where are you going?
I'm going to the GOP National Convention.
Oh.
Kind of a once-in-a-lifetime thing.
Right.
Tell Warren you heard we said hi.
I don't like sending that much crap in one day.
It'd be tough.
You know, it's like I tell everybody, I, in my opinion, they're getting us both from both sides, I'll put it that way.
So anyway, anything that, I guess we are discussing next week, if I can get that stuff by email, I'll... I can either try to print stuff off or just have it available when we have our meeting.
We'll make it a point to try and get you the full packet of what we got.
So when is Scott planning on, I didn't catch, I didn't, maybe I didn't listen.
He said August.
Sometime in August, because remember there was some department heads that come in and ask for stuff for their own departments, and I don't know if you guys have done any research on any of that, but I called some people to find out the different pay of different positions, and one that was way off in our county is the county attorney, so, and she brought that up, and so we need to probably look at how you guys want to address that, um. And then there are some other areas too, that I had some ideas, and I ain't even how to pay for them, but, uh, until we're ready to talk about that, to send forward, then that's my question, is when do you guys want to talk about any of that?
Well, we need to get Waco here, and Michelle, he's worked about.
I offered them, just by you all, just to see if you can respond to that this morning.
Because the preliminary numbers with some of that insurance stuff looks pretty outstanding. Looks like what we're wanting, I just want that.
Absolutely. I ju, I just talked to him last week, so, or week four last.
Yeah.
What was the date? By July nineteenth, we have to determine the revenue neutral rate, which...
We've already done that, so...
Okay, so then, are you wanting to schedule something for us to discuss?
We need to, yeah, we need to discuss it, but we probably need to get Waco here first, if we want to get that out of the way.
Get all the information out there on the table, so I know exactly where we're at.
Do you want me to call him this week and see?
I'll call him twenty-second. Do you have anybody to call since twenty-ninth?
No, financial docs, the twenty-second, but it's not gonna be that long to do anyway. I think, I got financial box on the twenty-second.
Available the twenty-second over the twenty-ninth, twenty to July.
Well, let's get up scheduled for the twenty-second, I think, I wouldn't, don't you guys agree?
Yes.
Even if we did it later in the morning and get the financial box out of the way and schedule them.
So with Waco, we're getting update, 'cause he'll have about, well, four, four months' worth of data.
They'll have a pretty good idea where we're at.
He's in the office, so he should have about six months' worth of data. Yeah, and the first six months are always gonna look a little better, because you have all the deductibles after that, so, um, depending on that, but, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's enough out there that we can see kind of a good idea. We're returning, 'cause the main thing is to make sure we're positive and not negative.
Yeah, well, she'd sent out Jessica some that email a few weeks ago, and, or maybe it was a voicemail, but the percentage and the threshold were a little bit under of what was projected, so.
The way we funded it, we funded it where the county could not lose this year, but that's, we want to fix that moving forward, so...
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
The way we funded it was the county could not go, it could not possible go into the, into the red.
Oh, well, because we did the maximum.
Exactly, so what we'd like to do is back that up if we have the ability to do that moving forward, but we don't know the numbers, and we needed to see years where the numbers are. So hopefully he can give us a pretty good idea. At least the trending numbers, so when we do the budget, we can know what that is, because that means a lot towards what all the other conversations have been about also.
Right, because if we have built up enough of a reserve in that line item, then the next year we may not have to budget that or do that full amount that we did this year, or vice versa. Yeah, okay.
I mean, instead of the insurance company making the money, the money's gonna stay in there, that the, the employees get that benefit.
As we pay.
That's the idea behind that, so.
Okay, we'll put that off for the twenty-second to get financial documents and Waco.
Is there sort of time on Waco?
I want to tell him.
Eleven.
Not where.
Oh, you want to do that, or are we gonna do financial docs first? Uh, they don't matter, financial docs, 'cause they're here.
Right.
They're here regardless, so...
But that's the thing, Waco can be here, they can get their stuff out of the way, and then we don't have to, we can prove that the financial documents might go fast. I mean, I've reviewed them, but I don't have much.
There's not a lot.
You know, what you had.
I sent a whole list. I sent a whole list too, so I don't know if we'll be able to prove it that day, but I think we get a really good start on, um, moving through it.
I don't want to start on moving through it. We already started that process. The whole idea was, is for you guys to ask your questions and be able to visit with Josh and them outside the meeting, so that when we come back, everybody's reviewed it, the changes have been made, and we approve that document. We keep kicking this hand down the road, we're never gonna get it now. We've been waiting.
Well, there may be times we need discussion though, if there's questions that we each have, or maybe there's something we don't agree on.
That's the whole point for each of us to Josh and having that conversation outside, and we've already talked about that. But we'll see what the twenty-second has to do, I guess. Uh, with that being said, uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Have a good day.